Thank you, very good. Good evening. Welcome to the Towns of Lacey Caucus Meeting, April 28, 2022. Item number one, proclamation for May, May 22nd, as Neurofibromatosis Month.
The Children's Tumor Foundation observing May 2020, May 2022, I'm sorry, as Neurofibromatosis Awareness Month to educate the public about this rare genetic disorder. Although over two million people around the world are living with NF and one in every three thousand person is diagnosed with NF, it is still, is relatively unknown to the public. NF affects all populations equally regardless of race, ethnicity, or gender. Whereas NF causes tumors to grow on nerves throughout the body and also can affect development of the brain, cardiovascular system, bones, and skin. Whereas the disorder can lead to blindness, deafness, bone abnormalities, disfigurement, learning disabilities, disabling pain, and cancer. Whereas the Children's Tumor Foundation leads efforts to promote and financially sponsor world-class medical research aimed at finding effective treatments and ultimately cure NF. Children's Tumor Foundation is actively fostering collaborative partnerships in both science and industry to speed the drug research and development process through a number of consortia called SINDOs. The Children's Tumor Foundation works to improve access to quality patient healthcare through its National CF Clinic Network. And whereas the Children's Foundation provides patient and family support through its Information and Resources Youth Programs and local chapter activities. And whereas much remains to be done in raising public awareness of NF to help promote early diagnosis, proper management and treatment, prevention of complications, and support for research. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Mark Dykoff of the Township of Lacey, on behalf of myself and the Township Committee, do hereby proclaim and recognition of this important initiative, May 2022, as Neurofibromatosis Awareness Month.
Stacey. Stacey, on behalf of the Township Committee, thank you for bringing this very important issue to us. Stacey contacted me in reference to this and it seemed like a very, very worthwhile thing to bring up, so there you go. Get in this picture.
One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Item number two, I'm very happy to say this, Resolution 2022, has 138 promoting an office officer to be sergeant.
Resolution of Township Lacey, County, Washington, State, and New Jersey promoting Michael Heinz to position as police sergeant for the Lacey Township Police Department. And I have a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curta?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes.
I would like to call Chief Pella up now before I start anything else. Thank you, Veronica. As always, I'd just start out to quite thank our governing body for their continued support of our police department. And I'd welcome everybody here this evening to support Officer Heinz. So, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Over here. It wasn't going to be anybody with somebody shorter than that. Thanks, Mayor, appreciate it. Well, I'm sure you bring him up. All right. Thank you, Father. Officer Heinz is a lifelong resident of Lacey Township. He started his career many years ago as a correctional police officer, initially for the New Jersey State Department of Corrections, and actually made his way over to the Ocean County Department of Corrections. On April of 2013, he was hired by the Lacey Township Police Department as a full-time police officer. His education, he's got an associate's degree from Ocean County College. He has two bachelor's degrees from King, one in criminal justice and the other in sociology. He also has a master's degree from Fairleigh Dickinson in public administration. Since joining the police department, Officer Heinz has served in the Patrol Division and has undertaken various roles, including first of all, very important, Field Training Officer, FTO, where he trains newly hired officers for the police department. He's also one of our, one of our fire instructors. More importantly, for the last few months, a couple of months, he's taken on the position of OIC, Officer in Charge of our Overnight Squad since Sergeant Chornos has retired from the police department. And he's done a really good job, really good job at that. Officer Heinz comes from a family of law enforcement. His father, unfortunately, most of us know that he passed away last year.
You're in the town?
My god, his.
You're in the town?
My god, his inspiration. Wow. Wow. He got his inspiration from, from his father, who's a retired captain from the Ocean County Sheriff's. And I didn't know it was a year today, so it's absolutely amazing. Everything happens for a reason. And I'm glad I could stand up here if you'd like to give this honor. Mike is your fiancee, Donna. The son Jason's about my height. His mother broke marriage and is probably dead, so congratulations to Sergeant Heinz on this.
I will read the right just for Peter after me. I, Michael Heinz.
I, Michael Heinz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I faithfully.
That I faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
As police sergeant.
As police sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So, all we got.
So, all we got.
Congratulations.
Maybe your second voice, maybe one.
That'd be your wife.
Oh, absolutely. And your wife too there.
Sergeant, if you'd really can sign your oath there for me.
Yes, I would.
Thank you very much.
Township Committee, Mr. McDonald, please. Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, doing a lot of this lately, swearing new officers in, promoting people. And that's a good thing because Lacey is, heads into the future here. We're going to need bright, young men, women, to lead this police force into the future. There's no question about it. The times have changed, as the chief will tell you. And every time he turns around, here comes a new edict app from the AG's office and he's going, what am I going to do with this? We're going to need, we're going to need these bright, young people to lead this. We've got a great police force. In fact, I'll tell you, I think we've got the best police force in the state right now. But we're going to need good, young people to do that, to lead this in the future. And I think you're going to be the ones. So, thank you and keep us safe.
Phil Toll.
Thank you, Mayor. It's always an honor to have a few words when we have a promotion here of another fine police officer. Now, I just want our residents to remember, it's not only law enforcement, it's a really difficult, nuanced job that we know that you all do. It's educator, de-escalator, it's conflict resolution specialist, it's part counselor, and it's law enforcement. So, we know the job that you all do. And I'm telling you, I sleep at night, and I know I can speak for all of us when I knew you were all out there. I love you guys and ladies. And I hope God walks with you every step of the way. God bless you and thank you so much for taking care of us and making Lacey number one. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say congratulations and I'm so proud to know you and your family as well as I do. And thank you, thank you, thank all of you and you for your service. Thank you.
Mr. Kenneth.
Sergeant Heinz, you've worked very hard to get to this spot. You've displayed a lot of leadership qualities and are important to our force. I wish you the best of luck and congratulations.
Sometimes it's, it's hard to go last, but sometimes it's very easy. And as I listen to my fellow committee persons, something is going to stick out. Leadership, Mr. McDonald talked about, you know, we see this very often, but what I notice as we have our promotions and our hires is the quality of young men and women that we have coming forward and their education. And you're a perfect example of that. And what keeps on sticking in my mind now that Mr. Kenneth spoke was leadership. And given your experience and your education and of course, working with these fine police officers, we know you're going to be a great leader and a great asset to our, to our force. Congratulations to you, your family, and God bless. Now, we will allow you all a few minutes and unless you want to stay, I mean, we're exciting, I know we are.
Riveting stuff.
Riveting. Thank you very much. Chief.
She doesn't need a mic.
I guess I do. Well, that would be a little later, right? I have an add-on for the caucus agenda. The Lacey, the Lacey United Methodist Church is having a special, looking for a special use permit for this Saturday, April 30th, from eight to three, to hold a car show in their parking lot. I just need, if you guys all agree with it, a motion to approve it.
Move it.
Call a favor?
Aye. Now, motion.
Now, we can adjourn.
Move it. Second.
Call a favor?
Aye. Meeting, everybody, welcome to Township Lacey Township Meeting, April 28, 2022. Item number one, first reading order, this is 2022, has 12, establishing the funds for the 2022 capital budget.
In order to Township Lacey County, Washington, State, and New Jersey, providing for various capital improvements and the acquisition of various capital equipment appropriate, three million, three hundred thirty-three thousand, therefore authorizing the issuance of two million, eight hundred thirty-one thousand bonds and notes to finance portion of the cost there authorized in Township of Lacey. This is our 2022 capital budget acquisitions. This includes items for the police departments, fire departments, emergency service squads, public works departments, our infrastructures, which are roads and streets and parks, engineering for various projects that we're looking to do in the future as well. Motion, this is first reading.
Move it.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Item number two, second reading order, this is 2022, has 08, authorizing the purchase of block 1852, lots 47 and 48.
In order to Township Lacey County, Washington, State, and New Jersey, authorizing the purchase of block 1852, lots 47 and 48 on Arthur Street pursuant to NJSA 48,12, dash, five. This is again in the area in need of redevelopment. It is a sixty-by-a-hundred block. We are set up, we are purchasing it for thirteen thousand, five hundred thousand.
Second reading, open the floor to public comment.
Stand down, make a motion to close it.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Toll?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes, item number four, second reading order, this is 2022, has 10, authorizing the purchase of block 1852, lots one, two, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty to thirty-six, thirty-nine, and forty.
In order to Township Lacey County, Washington, State, and New Jersey, authorizing the purchase of block 1852, lots one and two, which are on Bell Street, lots twenty-eight, twenty-nine on North Avenue, New York, lots thirty through thirty-six, lots thirty-nine and forty, and lots forty through, through forty-six, which are on Arthur Street pursuant to NJSA 48, 12, dash, five. These parcels again are in the area in need of redevelopment for the third phase of our affordable housing project. We're purchasing them for a hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. All of these funds are coming out of our Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Second reading, open the floor to public comment.
Stand down, make a motion to close.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Toll?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes, item number five, Resolution 2022, has 139, authorizing the FMLA leave of absence for an employee.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Washington, State, and New Jersey, authorizing a leave of absence for Lisa Monble. This is from April 7th of 2022 to May 22nd of 2022 for a medical leave.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes, item number six, item number seven, Resolution 2022, has 141, authorizing replacement of a lien on a property for property maintenance.
Move it.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Washington, State, and New Jersey, accepting certification of the director of public records concerning costs incurred in removal of the green cleaning up of the property located at 838 Baldwin Street, known as Block 1541, Lot 23, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of six hundred and forty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. This is a bad piece of property. Unfortunately, the property owner had passed away. There is some issues going on with the estate and we've had to step in to some cleaning of the property.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes, item number eight, Resolution 2022, has 142, authorizing the refund of deposit money.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Washington, State, and New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Toll?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes, item number nine, Resolution 2022, has 143, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Washington, State, and New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of three million, four hundred thirty-three thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars and eighty-three cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes, item number eight, Resolution 2022, has 142, authorizing the refund of deposit money.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Washington, State, and New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes, item number eight, Resolution 2022, has 142, authorizing the refund of deposit money.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Washington, State, and New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Toll?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes, item number nine, Resolution 2022, has 143, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Washington, State, and New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of three million, four hundred thirty-three thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars and eighty-three cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes, item number eight, Resolution 2022, has 142, authorizing the refund of deposit money.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Washington, State, and New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
And say whose mention?
No.
And Mayor Dykoff?
Yes, standing on L 1655. Item number nine, Resolution 2022, has 143, authorizing the payment, I'm sorry. Item number 10, motion to approve a raffle license for the Associated Humane Society.
Move it.
Second.
Call a favor?
Aye. Um, Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Committee, Mr. McDonald, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess it was last weekend, Saturday night, I got the honor of swearing in the Lucha Harbor EMS new officers. It's been a couple of years since we've had one of those, only because of COVID and so forth. It's always a privilege to go down there and do that and see those people, you know, cut up loose a little bit because they are under such pressure to, to, to perform and perform constantly. Every time they go out, they have to perform, they got to do it right or, quite frankly, somebody, somebody could pass on. So, that's always an honor. A couple of weeks ago, I was talking to Casey Parker because I was concerned about, as I'm always, the economy and how it's going to affect Lacey Township. And we had just put some paving projects together. And I said, Casey, I said, what's the cost of paving going to? And he said to me, he said, back in September, it was ninety-five dollars a spread ton. I have no idea what that means. Today, it's a hundred and nineteen dollars per spread ton. And I was looking at him and he goes, and what we're seeing here, and maybe Veronica can verify this, is we're seeing escalators in the contractor. So, that if the numbers that they quote, they get to, they get to bump it up a little bit. Like I said earlier on, it's not really going to affect this year's budget, but you can bet your bottom dollar it is going to affect next year's budget going forward. And I just want to bring out something else, my least favorite senator in the whole world. The senior senator from New York made a ridiculous statement when he said the way to curb inflation is to increase taxes. And I'm sorry, but that is just the most ridiculous statement, that a man of his power and his, he's got enough people around him to think he should know better to make that ridiculous statement. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Kurt Toll?
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. On April 18th, this committee was in receipt of a letter from the Department of Education from Commissioner Allen McMillan explaining the colossal cut to our schools in particular. And one of the reasons that was given is we have a hundred and forty-three less kids in poverty than in years past, which is a good thing and it's why people choose to be here. We're a land here in Lacey of makers and not takers. And I appreciate that and I know everyone else does. But the take-home point of the letter was, there's five hundred and sixty-four municipalities in New Jersey. So, again, I say, recognize the Ninth District because they're the good folks, Senator Connors, Assemblyman Ro, Assemblyman McGough, who have advocated for us and CC'd our mayor and superintendent Clark, and they continue to advocate for us. I know it seems like I bring this up at each meeting, but at each meeting, there's a good reason to do it. So, it's an honor to have Senator Connors over here, not only in this capacity, but also as an advocate in the Ninth District, right down the street on Lacey Road. So, Senator, thank you for that.
Thank you.
It means a lot to our schoolkids and they're our future, so thank you. Last week, I was at a meeting with Commissioner Vicari. I serve on the Ocean County Board of Tourism and Business Development. We had a special guest there, his name was Jeffrey Vassar. He was the Director of Tourism from New Jersey. He's working on some exciting things. We believe that this year, tourism season is going to be, because of pent-up demand and want for staycation, so there's COVID sprinkled in, people still want to fly, it's going to be huge. Rentals are gone already and what Mr. Vassar had said to our board is that they're going to be getting back to like, you know, the New Jersey and U perfect together. In other words, a new ad blitz. They're going to be attracting people not only from New York, Pennsylvania, but also Dare County down in the Outer Banks and abroad. So, there's people that wanted to come over here. And one of the concerns from the tourists and business people abroad was, well, do you have the hospital capacity? So, introduce one of our hospital associations to that board and to the state and hopefully now they can have a partnership and just assure people that want to come over here and spend their tourism dollars, that that'll be the case. I want to thank our girls, all of us were invited for a girls' softball first pitch and we attended. It was wonderful to support our girls and it was a nice time. Of course, our mayor was there as well. I want to thank Home Depot. Right before the meeting tonight, I got a telephone call from the manager of Home Depot who is again going to afford us flags for our Memorial Day Parade. They don't have to do that, they do that every year. So, I always want to recognize that in the civilian support liaison for our Veterans Commission. Municipal Alliance Lunch tomorrow. Happy 30th birthday to Peg and 28th birthday to Veronica.
That was a flout. Nobody can go on his neck?
I am.
Okay, we're laughing. We're not laughing at the joke. Sorry, guys, thank you, Mayor, thank you. Mrs. Juliana?
Honestly, Mayor, all I have to say is tomorrow is the senior luncheon, which is a nice event for all of us to shop for if we can. And then on Saturday is also the Family Fun Walk here at Gillie Park. It's from 10 to 12, another event that should get out there to children if you can. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Kenneth?
Thank you, Mayor. You prepared my remarks tonight. The time.
You found the time?
That means he has a lot to say.
You found the time?
I say it quickly.
You found the time? You always tell us you have no time.
So, I just want to share a couple of news stories that I've read over the past few days and then have a general point. The first, as reported in the Asbury Park Press, is regarding the oversight of the COA money mandated by the state and entrusted to Asbury Park. Allegedly, developers were awarded the money, renovated housing, and then raised rent forcing tenants to vacate. Over two million dollars in COA money was used, and this is just in Asbury Park. And this is, I'm not, this isn't a, you know, a long-winded speech about COA. I can talk about it though, but this isn't that. This is, just for people to be aware, this is something that the state mandates without any real consideration or well-thought-out plan with regards to the real-world application of such programs. No oversight, no accountability, and no management. And the second story involves the redistricting of New Jersey. For those unaware, New Jersey is re-divided every 10 years? Every 10 years into new maps that comprise new voting districts. It was just completed at the end of last year. The new maps are then voted on by a state commission. As reported in the New Jersey Globe, the lead expert from the Princeton Gerrymandering Project is under investigation for data manipulation. That data was used to assess the fairness of the current districts. So, this might explain why Lacey has one local district in a different state district. So, the point of me sharing this is not politics, believe it or not, but I'm advocating for and thankful for the journalists and local news agencies that have made a career out of researching and reporting what most would think uninteresting and boring stories. Somebody's taken the time to provide the information that many would find unimportant, but it's not. So, in my opinion, I don't think anything can substitute for learning by way of reading and I'm thankful that there are those who are still willing to provide that much-needed service of finding and providing information. Those are my comments.
Very much. Very good. So, I had the opportunity to speak in front of the old guard on Monday, a great bunch of guys. I mean, they really, I had spoken with them many years ago and it just, you know, gave them a lot of informational things about what's going on in the town. And now, with that in mind, I'll segue into something that happened this week. We, Ms. Ray LaRae, myself, and representatives of both the council, including Councilman Gifford. who have advocated for us, and CC'd our mayor and Superintendent Clark, and they continue to advocate for us. I know it seems like I bring this up at each meeting, but at each meeting, there's a good reason to do it. So, it's an honor to have Senator Connors over here, not only in this capacity, but also as an advocate of the 9th District right down the street on Lacey Road. So, Senator, thank you for that.
Thank you.
It means a lot to our schoolkids, and they're our futures, so thank you. Last week, I was at a meeting with Commissioner Vicari. I serve on the Ocean County Board of Tourism and Business Development. We had a special guest there, his name was Jeffrey Vassar. He was the Director of Tourism from New Jersey. He's working on some exciting things. We believe that this year, tourism season is going to be, because of pent-up demand and want for staycation, so there COVID's sprinkled in, people still don't want to fly, it's going to be huge. Rentals are gone already, and what Mr. Vassar had said to our board is that they're going to be getting back to like, you know, the New Jersey and you perfect together. In other words, a new ad blitz, and they're going to be attracting people not only from New York, Pennsylvania, but also Dare County, down in the Outer Banks, and abroad. So, there's people that wanted to come over here, and one of the concerns from the tourists and business people abroad was, well, do you have the hospital capacity? So, introduce one of our hospital associations to that board and to the state, and hopefully now they can have a partnership, and just assure people that want to come over here and spend their tourism dollars that that'll be the case. I want to thank our girls, all of us were invited for girl softball first pitch, and we attended, and it was wonderful to support our girls, and it was a nice time. Of course, our mayor was there as well. I want to thank Home Depot. Right before the meeting tonight, I got a telephone call from the manager of Home Depot. He's again going to afford us flags for our Memorial Day parade. They don't have to do that, they do that every year, so I always want to recognize that in the civilian support liaison for our Veterans Commission. Municipal Lions Lunch tomorrow, happy 30th birthday to Peg and 28th birthday to Veronica. That was a flout. Nobody can go when he's laughing.
I am.
Inside election.
Okay, we're laughing, but we're not laughing at the joke. Sorry, guys, thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Mrs. Juliana?
Honestly, Mayor, all I have to say is tomorrow is the senior luncheon, which is a nice event for all of us to shop for if we can. And then on Saturday is also the Family Fun Walk here at Gillian Park. It's from 10 to 12, another event that you should get out there with your children if you can. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Kennas?
Thank you, Mayor. You prepared my remarks tonight.
You found the time?
That means he's got a lot to say.
You found the time?
I say it quickly.
You found the time? You always tell us you have no time.
So, I just want to share a couple of news stories that I've read over the past few days, and then have a general point. The first, as reported in the Asbury Park Press, is regarding the oversight of the COA money mandated by the state and entrusted to Asbury Park. Allegedly, developers were awarded the money, renovated housing, and then raised rent, forcing tenants to vacate. Over $2 million in COA money was used, and this is just in Asbury Park. And this is, I'm not, this isn't a, you know, a long-winded speech about COA. I can talk about it, though, but this isn't that. This is, just for people to be aware, this is something that the state mandates without any real consideration or well-thought-out plan with regards to the real-world application of such programs. No oversight, no accountability, and no management. And the second story involves the redistricting of New Jersey. For those unaware, New Jersey is re-divided every 10 years, every 10 years into new maps that comprise new voting districts. It was just completed at the end of last year. The new maps are then voted on by a state commission. As reported in the New Jersey Globe, the lead expert from the Princeton Gerrymandering Project is under investigation for data manipulation. That data was used to assess the fairness of the current districts. So, this might explain why Lacey has one local district and a different state district. So, the point of me sharing this is not politics, believe it or not, but I'm advocating for and thankful for the journalists and local news agencies that have made a career out of researching and reporting what most would think uninteresting and boring stories. Somebody's taken the time to provide the information that many would find unimportant, but it's not. So, in my opinion, I don't think anything can substitute for learning by way of reading, and I'm thankful that there are those who are still willing to provide that much-needed service of finding and providing information. Those are my comments.
Very much.
Very good.
So, I had the opportunity to speak in front of the old guard on Monday, a great bunch of guys. I mean, they really, I, I, I spoke with them many years ago, and it just, you know, gave them a lot of informational things about what's going on in the town, and now, but that might also segue into something that happened this week. We, Ms. Ray LaRae, myself, and representatives of Berkeley Township, including Councilman Jim Burns and their planner Jim Morris, had met with Congressman Chris Smith, and he had actually called us for the meeting, because I had expressed to him in previous conversations, our desire, hope that one day, and I say one day, there might be a possibility to widen Route 9. And anyone who's lived in this township for any number of years realizes, if you go north to Beechwood, where 166 and Route 9 join, south to Waretown, it pretty much is getting overloaded, slowed down, and it really doesn't matter anymore what time of day. And of course, as I've talked about recently, over, you know, a number of years, there is a desire for people to move to Lacey Township. And we've got three major high-density developments that are in the works. And, and we have a, you know, a hope that we can extend the railroad right-of-way a little longer and help, and that's enabled us to alleviate some of the traffic, and then there's a plan from Berkeley to extend Western Boulevard, and hopefully that will alleviate it. But the case in point right now is Route 9. Now, is it going to happen in a year, two years, three years? No, but it doesn't really matter, and I'll give you a case in point. I've been up here for about 19 years, and that's when we started to build the railroad right-of-way. And it might take 10, 15 years, but it's something that we have to start now. We talk about it a lot when, when, and, and when grants become available, whether it be federal-state grants. We talk about something that's shovel-ready. So, we have to have the plan in place, so when funding becomes available, we can submit it as a shovel-ready project. And the nice thing, you know, we, you know, good and bad, we've actually got two congressmen in that district now. I don't know how long that will, will last.
10 years.
10 years.
Well.
Minimum 10 years.
Okay, so at any rate, but we've got two congressmen fighting for us. So, with that in mind, as I said, we, we had a nice long meeting, we discussed the feasibility, and that's the key word, the feasibility of widening Route 9, you know, and again, from Beechwood all the way to Waretown, and, and it is feasible. So, what we're going to look for in the future, because we don't want to spend money, because we have none, is possibly get some funding, and I've already discussed with Commissioner Quinn, possibly from the county, or hopefully get some funding via grant from the federal government to begin a feasibility study, that would identify the properties that would need to be acquired. And, and actually, if you look along the road, listen, we don't want to create any more non-business, but if you look along, you know, the Route 9 corridor, there are opportunities right now, because development hasn't really filled in, and even the ones that we've got approved, there are possibilities to acquire properties and/or, of course, eminent domain. So, I think that's, that's a bright light for the future and something we're planning on. We had a meeting today also in Orsted, and to discuss them building a substation for their offshore wind farm at the Oyster Creek site. So, that, that's a benefit as well, and hopefully we can realize something from that. Whether you're for wind farms or against wind farms, it's, it's something in the future. And that's all I have, all the public comment. Mrs. Descenza. Mayor Madras, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Regina Descenza, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. I had an opportunity yesterday to review the plans for the lofts at Lacey, so I'd like to let everyone know to please come to the May 9th Planning Board meeting. There is a proposed development for 270 condos, a gas station, convenience store, and a strip mall between the Carney Bank and the Lenoka Harbor CBS.
Regina?
Yeah.
It's not going to be heard.
I don't think it's on the May 9th meeting.
It may not be, but I'm still telling people to come to the Planning Board meeting, because you want to hear what's there, and they could come to a future meeting, which I'm saying.
Well, you know, as you might be aware, I, I post on social media the Planning Board agenda every month, and.
And nobody comes, and I was the only one at the last meeting.
And I'll continue to do that.
Yeah.
Just, it's not going to be heard, I should let people know. I mean, if they're coming to the May 9th meeting to listen to that application, it's not going to be heard at the May 9th.
You're sure it's put off?
Sure it's put off.
Okay, so anyway, stay tuned to all the Planning Board meetings in the future, because they are usually held every second Monday of the month at 6:30 PM in this room. If more people would show up, maybe we can convince the Planning Board to demand that developers scale this project back a little bit. It's very intense for a 28-acre parcel. As I said, I reviewed the plans yesterday, ingress and egress is going to be rough. And please attend these meetings here, the Township Committee meeting, there's only six other people in the room, okay? There's 28,000 people in this town, and people want to bitch and moan about taxes and traffic and this and that. Well, you know what, you got to show up. And unfortunately, as much as we read the paper, thank God, Steve, you read the paper still, too. I read those articles. Please, people, read the paper, keep up with your local news. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Bender.
Hit me in the belly button.
We set up for Chief Development.
He's going to see this, you know that, right? Barry Bender is Dark Bay Avenue. Wasn't planning on getting up, but from Committeeman Kennas' comments, I'm hoping you folks can clear up for me, how when they do redistricting, they could take part of Lacey Township where there are no residents.
Well, wait, I'm in that district.
Yeah, but the piece that they took, there's no residents.
Oyster Creek.
It's Oyster Creek and the, and, how do you, like, come on, let's be blatant.
The most important resident town, right?
You, you live in the, in the, in the.
District 1.
I know, but I'm saying it's not the whole district, it's a tiny little piece.
It's entire District 1 of Ford River.
All District 1 with the bedroom.
I would encourage you to read the article in the New Jersey Globe.
I looked at the map when it first came out, and it was a tiny piece, so they changed it.
Yes.
When did they change it? Because when it first came out, it was.
I encourage you to read the article in the New Jersey Globe. In which one? New Jersey Globe.
I know who writes the New Jersey Globe.
The map that I've always seen, always had.
It sure wasn't.
The map that I've.
He should be in jail. Never been out.
The map that I've seen always had District 1 in Van Drew.
I saw a map that had a tiny little piece, it was Oyster Creek.
Always District 1 in.
All of District 1 meaning everything.
District 1 and south, which would include Oyster Creek and the business plant and all of that. But yet, from District 1 south, yeah.
Yeah, because the map had had.
But not across the street and the other districts, just that section, you know.
Right, that side.
Yeah.
Yeah, because seriously, when I looked, it was just little.
That was all done for Tech Andy, pure and un.
Well, it's not his anymore.
Exactly. Done to move him out of Ocean Capital.
Already moved out of Ocean Capital. Thank you much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Resolution, Township Lacey County, motion to State of New Jersey, authorizing the meeting in executive session in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Tolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, most of our insurance.
Move it.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
We will not be back out this evening.
We say that.
We do.